Good evening, everyone. I am State Senator Troy Jackson. I am the Senate Chair of the Citizen Trade Policy Commission. And please forgive me for not having as good directions as I should have had for being late. I really can't tell you how much I'm embarrassed by that, but thank you for coming despite my poor directions. And I want to tell you that I very much appreciate being here in Farmington tonight, not only the Citizen Trade Commission, but the members of the Joint Standing Committee on Aggie, Conservation and Forestry. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. The primary focus of this hearing is to gather public comment from the Citizen Trade Commission about a number of issues that are going to be affecting the state with the Trans-Pacific Partnership, another possible trade issues that are becoming up. And we're going to have Representative Treet give a brief overview before we take public testimony, but the main reason for having the public testimony is to take the public testimony for people to tell us how they feel about this, what issues are concerned with them, so we can go back and try and make the best efforts we can to let our federal elected officials know how important this is to the people in the state of Maine. Before Representative Treet does that, we're going to go around the committee and introduce ourselves, starting with Ms. Taylor on the end.
I'm Pamela McGasson.
Announced. Excuse me, sorry.
I am the Director of the Bureau Labor Stans for the Maine Department of Labor.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Carrigan Anderson. I'm with the Department of Environmental Protection. Until a time when I worked in a small business on the Citizen Trade Policy Commission. Representative Russ Byer, representing District 90 for a couple more weeks, and then one fiscal, 114, I served on the ACF Committee.
Janine Mills, Attorney General, I serve on the Commission. I am the Brown Coroner.
Good evening. I'm Representative Craig Kipman. I served District 82, soon to be District 81, went to Reedfield, and I served on the Aggie Committee.
Good evening. I'm State Senator John Patrick. I represent Southern District 14, which is 30 towns and townships in western and northern Oxford County, Metairie, and Franklin County.
I'm Jim Dill. I'm the House Chair of the ACF Committee. I represent District 14, which is Old Town and Indian Island, soon to be Senator. District 5, which is from Beezy to Millinark.
I'm Sharon Treet. I'm very glad to be here in Farmington tonight. I represent House District 79, which is Hallwell, Framerville, and West Gardner, and I will until December 3rd, when I am sadly terminated.
My name is Bernard Iarra. I represent nine towns in northeastern Rooster County. I've been on the Citizen Trade Policy Committee for eight years, and I also will be termed out of the State House as a state representative in about two weeks. It's been a wonderful trip. This has been a really interesting committee, and I'm going to miss all of the excitement of yesterday and the committee.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Donna Marie, and I represent two towns in York County, all combined.
Good evening, folks. I'm Jeff McCabe, representing District 85, which is the community of Scowegon, and then in two weeks, representing District 107, which will be Scowegon and One Road in East Madison. Thirty-six voters.
I'm Bob Schatz here. I represent House District 5 in Pres Isle, and soon to be representing District 147 in Pres Isle. And I'm on the ACF.
Good evening. I'm Jay Wadley with the International Association of Machinists, and I represent labor on the Citizen Trade Policy Commission.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Cole. I'm from CEI, the Community Development Corporation in Wiscasset. I represent economic development organizations on the Citizen Trade Policy Commission.
I'm Mike Hersch. I'm on the Commission as well. I represent nonprofit environmental organizations.
Good evening. I'm Joel Case. I'm an emergency physician in central Maine, and I represent healthcare on the Citizen Trade Policy Commission.
Locke, do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Locke Kermeier. I'm the staff person for the Citizen Trade Policy Commission.
I'm Karenetta O'Drillan. I'm nonpartisan staff. I did staff the ACF Committee, soon to be staffing the Transportation Committee.
My name's Michael O'Brien. I'm new at OPLA, also nonpartisan staff, and I'll be staffing ACF and helping out with HHS.
Earlier this year, we were charged with a biannual assessment of the Trans-Pacific Trade Partnership, TPP, and we had the Maine Farmland Trust do an assessment. Like I said, Representative Treet is going to give an overview, which she completely does a great job at, and after that, we'll start the public hearing. Representative Treet?
Okay. Well, I don't want to delay things too much, but we've been advised it would be just helpful to members of the public to just give a little summary about what we're about and what this report was about. We're required to do what's called an assessment of trade impacts on the state of Maine every two years, a report, basically. This is the report. It's on our website. And so every two years, we try to figure out what would be kind of an issue or issues that we should focus on for that time period. And we really have tried to be focused on issues that are of the moment. Right now, there are two trade, a big trade, actually, there's more than that, but there's two really big ones that we're focused on. One, Senator Jackson has mentioned, which is the Trans-Pacific Partnership. It's with 12 countries in the Pacific Rim. And that's been going on for about four years of negotiation. They're closing in on, you know, a few difficult issues, and then it's going to be heading off to Congress for Congress to decide what to do with it. That is an agreement that I think I should mention. We're here to take testimony on any issue relating to trade, and there may be people that have concerns around that. In the past, issues that have come up have concerned, for example, rebalance shoes and whether or not tariffs will be taken up, imported shoes that are brought into the United States from Vietnam. That's an issue with the Trans-Pacific Partnership. In addition, though, there's another agreement that's being negotiated right now. It's called the Transatlantic Partnership Investment Agreement, and that is with the entire European Union, which I think is 28 countries, if I have that right, but anyway, it's a whole lot of countries. And it would basically be the biggest trade agreement out there in recent years. And for the assessment, we asked that our experts, which included both national experts from the Institute for Agriculture and Trade Policy and also the Maine Farmland Trust, to give us a Maine perspective, take a look at how that agreement might affect agriculture in the state of Maine. And so in particular, we're interested in any reaction to that report or particular concerns around agriculture, and that's why we've invited the members of the Agriculture Committee to join the Trade Commission in this public hearing so that we can hear any public testimony. And just very briefly, that report raised a number of issues of concern and perhaps of opportunity as well. On the opportunity side, one of the things that's being discussed as part of those negotiations is whether or not to agree to something called geographic indications. We've all heard of Parmesan. It's actually based from a particular region in Italy. Should it be called Parmesan if it's made in Maine? That's an issue that's going to be part of the Transatlantic Partnership, or TTIP. That could be a detriment to those who want to sell cheese and want to say it's Parmesan or Feta or any of these others. On the other hand, maybe that could be an advantage if we want to say Maine blueberries, Maine seafood. So one of the things that we want to hear about is, are there Maine products that we as a commission and as the Agriculture Committee should be going to our members of Congress and saying, you need to make sure that these things are considered as part of the negotiations? Other provisions of the TTIP or the Transatlantic Agreement that are potentially of concern are provisions that might restrict what state dollars could be spent on. We have programs called procurement programs with the state of Maine and every other state go out and say, well, we're going to spend our state dollars buying these things, and we want to buy it from certain companies that meet certain standards. And the question is, particularly in the food area, whether we can have those kinds of programs that say that you have to buy a certain percentage, say, from local farmers, whether those will be restricted by this TTIP with the European Union? Because the European Union would like to have provisions in the treaty that say that no, you couldn't do that, or maybe saying that. One thing that we need to know is that all of these negotiations take place behind closed doors. So what is actually going on behind those doors? We don't really know, but we do know what people say publicly they'd like to see. And we also know that a number of the provisions have been leaked to the public, mostly from the European side. And so what we have indications about are that the Europeans very much want to essentially control what state governments and even local governments do in terms of their procurement policy. So this may be something that people have issues about. One other issue of interest to us, I know that the Aggie Committee wasn't 100% in agreement on this issue, but it is state law now that we did pass for GMO labeling. And that is, of course, something we're waiting to see what happens in other states, but that is an issue. The European Union does have GMO labeling already. We do not in this country, and the issue is whether or not the state of Maine and other states might be prevented from adopting policies that go beyond what the federal government in the United States does, whether it's GMO labeling, whether it's pesticide standards, whether it's any number of things. Those are things that this agreement actually gets into. So to just sort of finish up, I would just, one last thing is also very important in Maine is our Milk Stabilization Fund. That is something that we've had for many years. Fortunately, I don't serve on the Aggie Committee or the Appropriations Committee that has spent apparently untold hours getting into the details of the Milk Stabilization Fund. I think the thing to understand about that is it has been very, very effective in this report in terms of really maintaining family farms that are dairy farms in the state of Maine. And there is a concern that the way that is set up would be considered a discriminatory subsidy that couldn't be provided under this trade agreement. So I think one of the things to just know about these modern trade agreements is that although they include things about tariffs or not having tariffs, they also get very much into what we would call domestic regulation, the laws and regulations of federal and state governments. And this is a big question about whether or not we want to be part of a treaty that reaches down into this level of policies and basically dictates in certain ways what happens with that. So we are here today to hear about all of that, and we know also that there's many people that are very interested in the debate going on around Fast Track, which is basically the rules by which Congress decides whether or not it agrees to any of these trade agreements or not, and whether it will be speeded up through Congress or whether they'll have a lot of time to debate it and to perhaps make changes. So we're here to hear anything about all of the above, and I will turn it over to my co-chair to take it from here.
Okay. So unless there's any other comments to start, I would invite people to testify. I'll open up the public hearing.
I don't have a testimony at all. Maybe a contextual question to begin to sense of the context of this whole thing. I gather that everyone here...
Maybe you should come up to the table?
What?
Even if it's just a question, we want to hear it and just introduce yourselves.
Well, I'm just Bill Bonzal. I'm a farmer, I work in the town industry, and I'm a germ-placing curator. This is kind of relative to this, but part of my job is to maintain the genetic diversity in product lines, and I'm also an author. Mainly, this is a question about context here. Everyone here seems to be, whether legislative or NGOs, are all states. There's no one here that's federal. And yet, we're talking about whether the thing goes at all. In other words, aside from tweaking the details of this thing, none of you guys has any more pull than I do out of a thousand parts, whether this goes or not. Am I correct about that? The reason we're having this conversation, this meeting, is to see what specific things that we want to grind our own axes and which things will or won't. Am I right about that?
Well, there's no doubt that this issue is going to be decided on the federal level, but this commission, even before I've been on it, or some members have been on it since inception, has been very effective in advocating for policies for the state of Maine on the federal level. It's actually had a number of members actually go to different states because other states wanted to understand what Maine was doing to be so effective on the federal level on these issues. So we feel, I think many of us, and not all of us, feel it's very important for us to be able to talk about our sovereignty as a state and the things that are going to affect constituents in the state of Maine. This is one of the ways that we do it. We make sure that the public advises us on how they feel on these issues, and then we have, you know, had federal officials in front of us. We wrote letters for our positions as a committee. We've had a number of members, Representative Treet has gone to Washington a number of times, and other members have gone and testified in support of these things and, you know, not to be anything more than truthful. You know, I think that as state officials, we've been rather effective in trying to make sure that some of these harmful policies haven't actually happened in the state. And so if anything, this commission has been something that has, you know, been out in front and trying to at least make sure that the people in the state have a voice with our federal officials. So that's what our charge is. That's what we've done in the past.
But still, what we're saying, the best that can come out of this, what we or you any of us can do, will be to tweak the detail to these rights and stuff. Not that that isn't extremely important.
Well, I don't tweet, so. I don't.
I was just wondering if Representative Treet could describe her special role in trying to penetrate the federal trade regulation.
Well, I do have a special role. I can't actually disabuse you of the point of view that perhaps I'm not particularly effective at it. But anyway, there is one advisory committee to the U.S. Trade Representative, which has a whole bunch of advisory committees, most of which, serving on those, are members of various industries. That's, you know, there's like 600 to 700 advisors, almost at least 600 are from industry. But there is one that is a committee of state and local government officials, and I have served on that for over three years. And I can't say that my advocacy on that has necessarily changed these policies. A lot of it is still in secret. I will say my voice has been quite loud, at least. And I do think also that our members of Congress, partly because we have this commission, which doesn't just spout off about stuff based on what we read on the Internet, but actually commissions reports from experts, comes in with a certain level of expertise and, I think, you know, respect that you're not going to see from a lot of other states. So, yeah, in some ways, this is a system that's kind of rigged against people at the state level in the sense that it is being done at the federal level, and it's mostly been done behind closed doors. But I do feel that this process that we have, and we are required to have two public hearings a year to both get testimony but also to tell people about this, I think that that has been helpful, and I think that we need to keep doing this because part of making sure that these agreements, if they are concluded, are done in a way that's fair, is to have it out in the public as much as possible. And that's where we are really playing a role right here now. So I think that, and from what you said, it sounds like the things you do, like crop diversity, is actually very important and very related to the agricultural provisions that might be in these agreements. So I think you should feel that your concerns are very legitimate and are something that we would like to take to Washington if you have more to say about those.
But I guess the brilliance of the question, though, is as far as it's sort of a done deal, the best we're hoping for is to tweak.
No. I don't believe that, and I'll tell you why.
I mean, other than talking to Stephen Collins and Angus and so on, I have to try to twist their arms. Tell me why, yeah?
Yeah, I don't believe that. I mean, we don't really know, but, you know, there certainly were not the votes to do the Fast Track process before the election because there were enough members of Congress that knew that their constituents didn't approve of that. So I cannot say what the members of Congress will do if these matters come to them in the next year or so, but I do know that, you know, as elected officials, which we all are, are often responsive to members of the public who vote for us or not. And so, you know, I don't think it is a done deal. And so, you know, and my personal philosophy is you should fight to the bitter end anyway and not make assumptions about anything, so.
Part of my physical, I mean philosophical, I'm sort of ambivalent about it because on the one hand, I mean, looking at much the larger picture is like balkanism, we see as being bad, sort of Alex's state's rights, you know, it's all these little, we're all fighting intentions of doing it. Wouldn't it be nice if we could have a, in this case, an economic and marketing trade thing where we all work together and so forth? But on the other hand, you have situations like that where the things we talk about, if we lose certain rights, we lose our economy of environment, I'm particular to where it's associated with environmental rights, with labor issues and so on. I'm not sure myself what question, what answer I'm looking for for my questions. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Bonzal.
So let, take any testimony from anyone who'd like to tell us how they feel about any of these upcoming trade packs or...
Everyone's here just to see us sit here?
Just so I can leave anyone anytime.
We probably should emphasize that this is very much a live issue. What I'm hearing from people in Washington is that the administration may be pressing for a vote on a trade treaty, one of these treaties, very soon now that the elections are over. They're very concerned about, maybe even doing something during the lame session of Congress, I don't know, but I mean, I'm working with other attorneys general across the country to lobby members of Congress to take a step back when they get the details and take their time and look at how these provisions may well affect our communities in a negative fashion and possibly in a positive fashion. There's just a ruling about the protections of India, preventing us from exporting live pigs and poultry and stuff. That was in favor of United States farmers, but there are other rulings that are against United States farmers, and I think it's important to look at particularly the dairy prices and the milk stabilization program in Maine and flesh that out. We don't know the details because, again, the people who are on paper only knows what's kind of leaked out there.
And even, I mean, as a clear advisor, I do get to look at some text, but it's the text that the USTR, U.S. Trade Representative shows me, which is what they're thinking of doing, but it doesn't show me what the European Union or the Pacific countries are proposing, and I don't have an opportunity to see what the merged text looks like. So it's a very incomplete picture, but I do think it's important that if there are particular issues, whether it's dairy or respecting the court system, this is something that our attorney general's been very active in. One of the proposals, a big part of both of these big agreements, would be to allow corporations to challenge state and federal laws in it, basically before an arbitration panel, instead of going to court, and be able to get money damages if they think that those laws affected their profits.
That's part of NAFTA now.
Right. It's in NAFTA now, but NAFTA is only three countries, whereas with the Trans-Pacific and the Transatlantic, you're talking about almost the whole world being part of one or the other of these agreements. So any company or a subsidiary of any company in any of those countries could use this arbitration process to try to overturn or challenge various laws and regulations. And there certainly have been cases that have involved state laws and regulations as well as federal laws under NAFTA, so.
It would seem to me it would be very useful to cite some of the examples and to talk a bit about the arbitration process because the arbitrators are mostly corporate lawyers, as I understand it. They're not, there's not fairness, the corporate interests have a leg up in those proceedings in the same way they do in the secret proceedings that are going on now in terms of negotiations. So if you could pop away by some of the examples.
Yeah, and perhaps Attorney General Mills would like to address that because I know that she participated in a Chinese session, wasn't it?
I think she presided in a congressional forum in September.
About this very issue, right?
Yeah. Forty-eight attorneys generals signed a letter to Congress, or to the U.S. Trade Representative, early this year, I think in February, calling attention to the serious risk of this so-called investor-state arbitration process that exists now under NAFTA. And if it's imported into these two trade agreements, either one of them or both, which we understand so many other countries don't want, but if it's imported into those trade agreements and that those are passed by the U.S. Senate, then we look at, we see a serious risk to the enforcement of our state tobacco laws and to the enforcement of master tobacco settlement of 1998, which the attorneys general implemented and enforced. We have protections against marketing tobacco to children, advertising abuses. We have state local regulations targeting tobacco with licensing, taxation, minimum age for purchases of products, retail display, fire safety standards, minimum prices, indoor smoking restrictions. Some people may want those gone, but I mean, they're the law of the land in our state right now, and all of those important public health measures are potentially in jeopardy because of various trade agreements. You take, if you compare yourself to another country that doesn't have those kinds of regulations, they will say that the state of Maine, for instance, is undercutting their business opportunities in Maine. If they're manufacturing, if they're growing tobacco, manufacturing cigarettes or tobacco products in another country and wanting to import and export them to Maine, then our regulations would unfail and minimize their competition, you know, take away their edge. And we, as a state, won't even have a right to protest, really. The company will bring an arbitration petition as if it was the state, the country, and it will bring an arbitration before a self-selected board of arbitrators based on past history. And we really won't have much to say at all. They can overturn court decisions in the state of Maine and at the federal level as well. That's very bothersome. And this is sort of, this is a bipartisan effort to object to these kinds of procedures. The Conference of Chief Justices, which is a bunch of people who don't really take sides in public policy as a rule or politics, they're very suspicious of this. Twice, they have passed resolutions, including earlier this year urging Congress and the Trade Representative not to allow foreign investors any greater substantive and procedural rights than those that U.S. citizens have and U.S. businesses. Last year, the Conference of Chief Justices, every chief justice in the highest court of the state, all the states, they were so concerned about the sovereignty of state judicial systems, they passed a resolution asking that Congress and the Trade Representative ensure that trade agreements recognize the right of state courts to regulate the admission and performance of lawyers in a jurisdiction. They were that concerned about the unlevel playing field, which we consider good for our health and safety and the regulation of good conduct in our state, that could be undermined by this so-called investor-state arbitration provision that's currently in NAFTA and is being talked about being imported into these other two trade, massive trade agreements. You know, if there is an unequal, say, the GMO example you mentioned earlier is a good example now, whether that ever actually takes effect because it's been put off, but something similar to that, whether Maine has certain regulations regarding fire safe children's toys, that kind of thing, but another country would not, and maybe, remember we had the Barbie doll issue with China a few years ago? They had denied us. Well, they were putting some kind of poison chemicals in the Barbie dolls, remember? And kids in America, of course, were being harmed by that. So you wouldn't be able to prevent those products from being imported to the state of Maine or to this country because of the so-called level playing field provisions of the trade agreements. You can't impose greater regulations than they have. It's, you know, in theories to level the playing... It's, you know, in theories to level the playing field. In practice, it can do a great deal of harm to our basic state and federal laws protecting the health and safety and welfare of our citizens.
Madam? Cynthia Stanislawa from Chesterville. And I'm really untutored in this. I have no idea what the report says, but just sitting here, I've always been pretty scared of and unimpressed by these, you know, international treaties because I just don't see how, I really don't see that the benefits outweigh all the dangers because that means what you're bound to do is to be tampering with things that we have, we, you know, like every party to it has spent a lot of time hammering out as things that we want to be, you know, our situation, you know, our values, our things that are, that matter to us and that, that we've all, like, as Jim was pointing out pretty well, we've taken a lot of time and care to, you know, form, formulate this situation that we feel is just and reasonable and well thought out and so on. Like, and to have it sort of secretly just undermined, you know, behind closed door, international closed doors that are significantly controlled by corporate profit interests, I just don't see how you win. But there's no way out of it, right? Like, states in the United States all have to be held to the international treaties that we, so the only thing they possibly do is try to get them not passed.
Right. And one of the differences, I think, in, several of us have been on this commission for a bunch of years going back. It was formed, I think, in 2003. So it's been around for a while, but in the early years, basically, the commission would sort of find out about stuff right when it was about to go to Congress and it had already been finalized. And there wasn't a lot of opportunity to really influence what went into that agreement or even to really get up to speed. So the only issue was just vote no or vote yes.
Right.
But I think one thing that's different now is that with this Trans-Pacific Partnership, they've been negotiating it now for over three years. And the Trans-Atlantic one, it's been maybe a year. They're still not decided. There's a lot more, I think, public awareness. For example, this investor dispute settlement is a huge issue in Europe where a lot of the Europeans do not want to have it. And so that is, something that really wasn't much of an issue under NAFTA when it was first adopted, has become more of an issue as people see how it worked out. So I do think that we're at a moment when perhaps there is more of an opportunity to either, you know, make changes in it or potentially stop things that people don't like. And I guess what I would encourage you, those of you who have concerns about it, that the real issue right now is whether or not Congress essentially gives away a certain amount of its authority by adopting this thing called Trade Promotion Authority or Fast Track. And, you know, where they essentially put rules on themselves that say, we're not going to spend a lot of time reviewing all of this stuff that we're not allowed to see yet, but when we get it, you know, we're just going to read it really quickly and then vote. So that's kind of Fast Track. And I think that, you know, if there's an opportunity to really review these agreements and make sure that if there are vague provisions that they don't go into effect, that's not going to be possible unless, you know, we don't have this Fast Track. So I think talking to, not only to us, but to members of Congress who will have the opportunity to vote on that would be very important.
To vote on Fast Track.
On Fast Track. But that's the first thing that's likely to come up. I mean, as Attorney General Mills mentioned, there's even a possibility it could come up in the lame duck session. But one of the things that I found notable was that immediately after the election, the Republican, the new leadership of the Senate said, well, there might be one issue we can work together on with the Obama administration, and that's trade. And I'm going to be really nervous. So, you know, I think that those people who care about this should really look at that issue in particular because, you know, those of us serving the legislature know if you have rules that are rigged in a certain way, then the outcome, no matter what the merits are, the outcome is going to be a certain way. And so these are, the Fast Track is like the rules of the road for considering trade agreements. And, you know, so that is going to matter a lot.
So we want, we want to contact our Congress people and say we are opposed to fast-tracking trade.
Right.
What is it exactly?
It's called Fast Track. So it's...
Just fast-track them. They'll know Fast Track as...
They're going to know what it is.
...the context of the free trade game.
Yeah, so you don't have to know everything about an agreement, but you can say, when that agreement comes up for consideration, we want you to spend the time that you should to really review something that could in fact so greatly affect us here at the state level. And that is something that even people who are quote pro-trade, pro-free trade, may be more receptive to that procedural question.
Okay. And since there aren't a lot of people here that are prepared, like with background knowledge, I'm just feeling like it would be useful, since you guys are the experts, to, like, if you want to know how we feel about stuff, you could give us a list of, sort of, here's some concerns, here's some things that might, might be concerns, and how do you feel about it? And then we could contact you with that, or we could, you know, raise our hands or something now. Just something like that because otherwise, I'm afraid there wouldn't be much...
Senator Patrick?
Yeah, the Fast Track authority brings, brings the trade agreement to Congress and their only alternative is to vote it up and down without the ability to put an amendment on it. Now, the state of Maine, if they were going after a lobster and a milk and stuff like that, they wouldn't be able to put an amendment on a bill which would benefit the state of Maine or whether in Oregon, or whatever it is in Oregon, whatever state it is. The authority just said...